Good evening, welcome to Planning Board for Tuesday, September 5th. We stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And I pledge allegiance to the republic of which stands one nation in the name of our government.
Okay, Joe, you wanna be a vote member this evening?
Sure.
There you go.
The mic's not here, so.
Yep.
And roll call to our young chair.
Jill Lynette.
Ma'am, she make her vice chair.
Jill Lynette also.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Tyler Perrin, member.
Kimberly Queenen, member.
Steve Perry, selectman rep.
Seeing there's no public input this evening, unless you have something.
Do we get Dave on the roll call?
And, uh...
Dave Samuel, member.
On the phone.
Telecommuting today.
Okay, Heritage Commission. Ladies.
You wanna lead?
I'll pass these out. Those to you two. Uh, Joan is not here today, but she did come up with the quote that I have on page one that I thought was very applicable to the demolition review. We'll go over the flow chart first, but we don't have to go in detail since you've seen some of this already. I wanted to ask her permission if we could actually use her quote, but we'll have to get that when she's available this week. But basically, we wanna drive the point home that the public must understand that ultimately it is the decision of the property owner to demolish or save a building. We want that right out front and in view. If we look at the flow chart, we don't have to go over it too much in detail, but I do want you to realize that we've been meeting since, I believe, mid-April on this, up until August 31st. We've had a few people look at this. We've had, um, the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer had looked at it. I think we probably should maybe start to bring Troy, uh, you know, the administrator into this, but I need to ask, you know, what we think we should go on that. We tried to put a timeline that was accurate over here that we think would actually go to the voting block. Do you want us to review the flow chart in general, or do you guys wanna do this on your own? It's up to you.
I already reviewed it.
Okay, you already reviewed it. If you look, if we go into the demolition review link here, when you have the, um, we had the flow chart was the first link. The review ordinance, what we did is we just tried, we took the flow chart and we just put the English to the flow chart to start to draft an ordinance. And that's what we reviewed for tonight. Does anybody have any questions? Should we, I actually have a question for the board itself. Should we start, once this gets solidified a little bit and we have, you know, everybody thinks it's okay, should we start getting this linked to maybe a website for the public to start looking at it?
Yeah.
I saw some of the Heritage Commission links where they say we probably should have a town meeting before the vote just to discuss what this is, the whole process, and the Heritage Commission itself. I'll show you that on some of the links here. The only reason I will say the 25-day window on the right here is because a Litchfield Hudson newspaper comes out once a week, so we had to give it enough lead time for two weeks of the newspaper cycle to come out. That's why we had a little bit of a lead time over there. So, the main block in here is whether the historical commission finds it, you know, historically, architecture, cultural, significant, which means we have to set up a Heritage Commission itself. Right, this is the other part of this meeting. So, the other, the drafts and the ordinances, the laws of New Hampshire are in the link here as well. Uh, we had here, let's see. Where's all your links? We just had all the links here with all the yellow.
The PDF file, the more reading.
Oh, was it that? Okay, yep.
Yeah, just for background, um, on the main page of the Google site, there are just two basic fact sheets for each of the demolition review ordinances and heritage commissions in general. Then there's the, the two drafts, the flow chart and the draft ordinance. And then there is, for those of you that wanted to get into the weeds, there was the more reading on demolition review and heritage commissions, which is a series of hyperlinks to everything you could ever want to read about these things online.
So, what are we ultimately looking to do with this today? Just, uh, just so I'm clear before we get into it.
Well, uh, one reason we called the meeting early, you know, this meeting was supposed to be another week out, was so we could start to review this as a body, because if we're gonna get this to the voters, hopefully by November or December this year, we need to start getting it on the record.
Right. So, if I can just touch on that procedurally, this would, um, because it would be an ordinance, it would have to go to town meeting. Same with the creation of a heritage commission, that would have to go to town meeting as well. So, there's a couple pieces that you have to coordinate here. Is, so the ordinance is kind of the standard bread and butter that you guys have gone through many times before. It would be drafting the ordinance here, and then by December, you would need to have a first hearing on the draft ordinance for consideration, potential second hearing in January, and it would go to the ballot for March. Simultaneously, if you guys do decide to move forward with this, you would then need to speak to the selectmen about the creation of a heritage commission, because that would have to also go to town meeting to create that entity. And so, that would be a bigger coordination piece that would have to be going on in parallel.
I, I, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but when we look at heritage commissions, like, we don't want, we just want this to be an ed, you know, advisory role only. We don't wanna get into historic districts or any of that, because it says that you can do both. So, when you're, when you're reading up on, on some of these links, we don't wanna get into that kind of a detail. We just want it to be advisory only.
And there be any budget associated with it?
Uh, one of the links had it more because of, um, let me think, I think it was the... There was, yeah, I think it was either the first or second yellow link that she had, but it wasn't a, a large budget. I mean, you have to take minutes of the meetings, right, kind of thing?
And you'd have to publish notices.
And you publish notices, yeah. There might be a little bit of an education cost upfront.
And so, a heritage commission would be more like, in terms of the meeting frequency, would be more like a zoning board that meets as needed, whereas the planning board is mandated by state statute to meet a minimum of once a month. That's why we don't skip a month. We always have one meeting in the month. We might skip eight, you know, cancel a meeting, um, but we're always here once a month, because that's a state statute mandating the, that the planning board be here.
Given that this commission would be tasked only with analyzing whether cases of demolition, this could be like, they could meet once a year.
Tenually.
Tenually. Well, looking at, I mean, looking at your flow chart, this all made sense to me. I, I didn't have any questions or concerns about any of how this was drafted, or it's very straightforward, and it seems to make a lot of sense, particularly in light of the concerns that you had brought forth at the beginning of the process. So, I, I don't have any comments on this.
We did change something on the Heritage Commission Holds the Demolition with the Public, the big block in the middle here. Um, we, we at first said it was mandatory that they put, you know, came to the hearing, but then we went back and looked at your, um, what, site building and planning board, you know, the meetings we had. We wanted to make sure that it, they don't have to be there, but they're encouraged to attend. We wanted to keep in sync with that, right?
I don't, yeah, I don't think you have the authority to compel an applicant to be present. Now, if they're not present and you have questions, like, just in general, on a site plan or subdivision application, you guys have the, you know, the ability to be like, well, they're not here to defend their case. So be it. And, and that bodes poorly for the applicant in that sort of a situation. Again, here, a heritage commission is advisory. It'd be the Heritage Commission convening a public hearing. I don't know that you can compel an applicant to be there.
So, a no-show, because they may not show, really is case one. You know, either they don't want it, or by no show, they don't want the building done. And even though the public is there, maybe voicing a concern for it, they don't have a vote, right? And then...
Correct.
It's, it's all up to the property owner.
I mean, I think that that still, that achieves, your, I believe your original concern and goal was just creating awareness of the potential destruction of historically significant structures. Right, so that, I mean, this does that.
Yes, and we just try to see if there's alternatives or to educate what they have.
Mm-hmm.
But at the end of the day, if they say, "Take it down," it goes down.
Yeah, and the, the... There's no mandating any of their involvement at all in this process, so if the landowner wants to destroy it anyway, they don't have to listen to this at all. They don't have to pay attention, just...
It's a pause button, though.
Exactly. It, it says, hey, if you wanted to know, here's some information. This is why maybe you might not wanna tear it down. I think it's a good thing to have, and I don't see any reason why not to do it.
Well, we have Steve in the room. This was for private buildings. We were maybe Phase Two, after we get through Phase One, maybe discussing, you know, taxpayer buildings, if it would make sense to flow to this, but let's at least get through this as a private process first. But this, so we was trying to get the zoning ordinance drafted, see if, if, you know, and we'll make the English match this flow chart, and then maybe talk to you for some advice to see if it would make sense to do this for, you know, schools, you know, fire station, whatever, taxpayer buildings. Because that's a separate process today. It's up to the board of selectmen on those buildings today.
So, I do have a question as it relates to the flow chart. We can call our attention there for just a moment. Whose responsibility will it be to place the public notices and remove them?
Well, we had talked about that, right?
That was the Heritage Commission.
It's a Heritage Commission.
Yeah.
So, one of the...
So, where, where is that laid out?
Uh, the second notice, right here, it's the second notice. So, there's two notices happening in parallel. First, the owner is notified, and they have five days to go get the sign and put it on their property. That 25-day window on the right is like a combination of, of, of the time that's happening. The second public notice is what the Heritage Commission's gonna send out. The reason we have like, we have to get it out 10 days before the hearing, but because of the way the Litchfield Hudson newspaper comes out once a week, you know, we have to get it to them by a Thursday to get into the paper on Friday. We, we had a need to allow two cycles in there. But that second public notice is the Heritage Commission. If you'd like me to put that in there, we could do that, just to say who owns it.
I think would be important to understand who, who owns the responsibility for the action.
Okay, 'cause the first public notice, we did say the owner gets and places the sign. Okay.
It is, yeah.
And if, and if the owner decides they don't want to participate, that, as you said earlier, they just don't participate, they don't go get that first public notice.
If they don't do that public notice, I don't think they can get their permit for the demolition, right?
Yeah, there's a line in there that's in the actual ordinance draft itself. Tu, 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 let me find it, that says, "If they don't show up within five days, if the sign is not posted within five days, the 40-day timeframe provided for above shall stop running and shall not resume until the sign is posted."
So, we're gonna tell these people they don't have to tear down their building, or they can if they want.
Can if they want.
But you gotta go get this sign and put it out here to tell everybody you're gonna do it.
Yes.
That's the first notice of the meeting. It'll have the date and time of the meeting.
The, uh, when the Heritage Commission posted. They're the ones that are concerned about this.
They could.
Okay. Have they signed to allow, have the applicants provided authorization to enter their prop, to go on their property? So, normally, when you get an application, the applicants say, "Yes, we're okay with the planning board visiting our property." That mean, well, I guess it depends on the type of app. Is that included on a building permit application? Some sort of authorization to let Kevin go onto the property? Because that's the main thing, like...
The liability.
That, yeah, you, the, you can't go, you can't trespass on their private property unless they've granted that, that rate of access. So, I think that's why the burden is on the applicant to come pick up the sign and post it. But we could look at that as, you know, alternative. Be a lot more straightforward to just have the Heritage Commission.
How, how do you, if you're already gonna tell somebody who wants to rip their house down, they gotta wait 45 days or whatever it is for this process to play through.
Yeah.
If you're also making them do other things, all they're gonna do is complain about it and say, "Why are you wasting my time?"
Yeah.
So, if it's really just to make people aware, and the Heritage Commission is formed for that, shouldn't the process be that they place the sign?
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
No, we'll, we'll research that.
I'd agree with that, Steve. I think that, uh, not to participate in the process, because ultimately, it's their decision as to whether or not they tear down the building. Why are you making them jump through hoops? I mean, you're, what it's doing, it feels like to me, is creating process for processes sake and encumbering the owner to a process that the owner may or may not wanna participate in.
The other thing, too, Steve, you, you could have this part of the permit that they're allowed on to place the sign there on the property.
Right.
That would cover you, Heritage Commission.
Yeah.
Just like Kevin, you take out a building permit, you're giving him permission to go on that property.
So, if he's already got permission, then, then he could potentially just take the sign and plunk it down? Figure out who's, who's got that authorization.
So, let's see, are they gonna be the Heritage Commission or the, I don't wanna say Kevin, but the Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer?
Yeah, I mean, you can say the Heritage Commission, or they may request that the Code Enforcement Officer do it or something to that effect. We have to get Kevin's opinion on that.
So, any other feedback is definitely welcome, as we get this finalized and refined as best as possible.
I'm not seeing anything here about placement of the sign. Is there, uh, is there anything in here that I'm missing?
Uh, in section 3B of the draft ordinance.
Whoa. I would recommend beating that language up just a little bit.
For example?
Is it a visible location on the building or property? Hey, I posted it on the back of the tree that's facing the house. It's visible. You just have to be standing in the right place, which, you know, is invisible from the street.
Visible to the public, something like that.
Okay.
Visible from the road.
Yeah, we don't want a little three by three inch on the window, you know?
No, like Kenny said, it should be visible from the road.
Okay. Okay.
Should be like a real estate sign.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the kind you point right on the property, yeah. And that, that has the date and the time on it. That's your first notice for the meeting.
Bless you.
Thanks. That's why I joked about you gonna sit over there.
You're sick, too, that's not me.
This is just allergies. There's a lot of pollen.
Yeah, my daughter thought it was allergists, too.
Great.
Anything else, Dave?
Is it 25 calendar days, 25 business days?
You know, you're gonna ask the good questions, huh?
4A.
4A.
4A within 25 days.
I say calendar.
And then the ban will, within 10 days.
So, the 10 is, is business days. I know that. Wait, no. Public hearing notice is 10 calendar days.
Both of them.
Those two are calendar.
So, I would add that detail?
Yeah, there's others that are business. The little ones are business days. The twos and the fives.
Yeah, and they're notice, notice as such.
Yes. Yep.
So, um, 4D. Unless the applicant requests to meet at a later time, why adjust a later? What about an earlier time?
That's for alternatives, right, to explore alternatives.
'Cause it says within. So, it could, uh, within 10 days, that's already acknowledging that it could be less.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, yeah, the intent is to say that, listen, we, the town, will not delay this any further than, you know, this much. But if you wanna delay it further, knock your socks off.
So, I know that you had said that this was for, uh, private buildings only. Is that correct?
Yes, currently, yes.
Where, where is the detail at?
What is what?
Where is the detail?
Like a, like a public residence, right?
No, so, it, what, Dave, what the...
Oh, privately owned.
Right, so, i- it might be more than privately owned. Basically, this would be incorporated into the zoning ordinance. And there is an exemption in state statute for governmental land uses. So, if something is municipally, state, or county-owned and used for municipal, state, or county government purposes, then it is exempt from local land use ordinances and regulations. So, that's why Kim specifying that this wouldn't capture those municipally-owned pieces, properties, um, which was one of the things that had prompted her question initially. So, a municipally-owned property that is not used for a municipal use, so it, say, if something was municipally-owned but leased out to a private enterprise, then that would still have to adhere to zoning. But, say, the fire department or town hall or, um, schools, those things do not have to comply with zoning. So, it would not have to comply with this document.
And what about a church? That's privately owned.
Church would have to apply.
Said, I mean, privately.
Yeah, yeah.
Should that be clarified for the public a little better? Even for myself, I was thinking privately-owned homes. But you're saying a privately-owned enterprise, not tax money. Could be a business, right?
Um...
In the building.
Yeah, I mean, the only exemption is for governmental land uses. So, it applies to everything except governmental land uses.
So, the only thing about the language here is if this is gonna go in front of the voters this way? If I am just reading this in a vacuum, I don't have that level of detail. So, it will take explaining to be specific enough and that this is not for government, isn't covered by those that are exempted from, based on the governmental exemption.
We'll, we'll put the wording in, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't put that wording necessarily in the ordinance itself, because that applies to everything in your zoning, your entire zoning ordinance, your entire subdivision regulations, your entire site plan regulations. That exemption applies to the entirety of those three documents. So, otherwise, we'd have to be stamping it everywhere. But we can certainly make note of that in the, in the speaking points and any of the outreach materials.
Any other questions or comments? Kim?
No, just, uh, any feedback would be welcome, so we can get this to the next step.
Thank... Generally, in terms of revisions and keeping everything moving forward, agenda-wise, I think our next meeting is entirely dedicated to the community design master plan chapter, so things would return the first meeting in October. I also just added a note to myself that we had those two other items that we looked at previously in July. One related to accessory dwelling units, the other related to, um, some minor items in site plan regulations that town council had flagged after town meeting for additional minor tweaking. So, those were pretty straightforward. I'll have those drafts back for October. We looked at those earlier in July.
Okay, community design.
All right. So, this is more... So... I said to Tom, I felt like we needed some time just to touch base before the next meeting, before we have other folks in here to just be organized and kinda come up with an agenda for that conversation. So, for tonight, I just, as I was kind of prepping to head over here this afternoon, I just, I updated the Google site page with just some discussion points for tonight. Wanted to touch base on how the committee member recruitment process was going. I don't know, Dave, I don't know if you had heard back from anyone. Tom, I knew you had some feelers out.
The town has heard back from no one as of yet. We do have a rep from the, uh, selectmen.
Yeah. Kind of track.
I, I did stop at the high school and talked to the principal's secretary the other day.
Oh, great.
She doesn't know if he even got the original letter.
Oh.
Because of all the starting school and everything.
Yeah.
So, I gave her copies of it.
Oh, good, okay.
She's very interested in it.
Good, okay.
And I put in a touching back base with her again before the meeting.
Okay.
And it does fit into the curriculum of the school.
Awesome.
Cause they do have a, what, six, what, thirty hours?
Yeah, something like that.
Of community development, of community interest. So that would work in beautiful.
Yep.
So the committee's gonna be Steve and a high school student?
No.
I'm also, I, I will also be going to the, uh, rec commission meeting and the zoning, uh, board meeting.
You're going to their meetings? Okay, when are those?
Is he gonna show up on Wednesday?
Well, understand, it was said that it was only gonna meet during these meetings.
Right.
Right.
So selectmen can't have two people here anyway. Or they could, but.
Could.
Be here anyway.
Right. That's why I said I can't really get out of this.
Keep it simple. You wanted to be here anyways for it.
This is cutting edge.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's coming up in a couple of weeks. I've got the date on it, so.
Okay, okay.
It just happens they are having a zoning board meeting this month, so.
All right.
Um, the historical society meets this Saturday coming up.
Okay.
They receive the letter, they'll get it onto their meeting meetings, they received it, and then people will come to the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I don't know who yet, but.
They'll ask you to do it.
I hope, I don't know if I can.
And I'm assuming.
I'm here anyway, but.
You certainly can.
I'm assuming conservation has it because it went to Joan.
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right, hey, Dave, did you hear anything from the members of the public?
The response was very underwhelming.
Well, there's a surprise.
Was there any response?
Thank you.
None.
Did you try my, did you try my tactic of telling them that we're gonna put a pipeline through their front yards? Telling you, that'll get it.
Did not try that.
Not cool.
Um, but I, I did sign you up to tell them that.
Perfect, I'll send an email.
It's gonna, it's gonna be quite a pipeline, it's gonna stream up and down every street.
Every street.
Every property in town.
And it's above ground.
So we don't have anybody from the public? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah.
So we have to try to get some friends on?
Okay. So is there, yeah, is there another tactic we can take to?
I can try to get someone for the public. I only have one option though, so if they say no, then I'm.
What, would they represent a specific constituency? So the list, uh, let me.
Did breathe.
Uh, yes, that is, that is one criteria. Um.
The problem is, the people that are willing to donate their time already do.
I know. That, most definitely.
How, how, I can't remember, how frequently would that meet? It's one meeting.
One meeting a month.
It's a third Thursday, Tu- Tuesday. Thursday.
Tuesday.
Six months.
No, for like a year.
One year.
Okay.
It might skip some meetings.
I'm still.
Um.
Hey, Dave.
You gotta be loud if he can, you need to wake him up.
Dave.
Sorry, I went on mute.
Yeah, did you, uh, have any touch base with the Facebook?
What's up, folks?
What's up?
Yes, it was, it was on there a couple weeks ago. And no response.
Okay.
Do you wanna repost to Facebook?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
There's eight people in this room right now, nine if you count Dave. There's probably more people than will read the master plan after it's done.
Mm-hmm, heartbreaking. Um.
For at least ten years. On what?
Um.
But it's gonna be so well drafted that we can just rest easy.
Okay. Any ag community members you can?
I've got a couple I wanna talk to, see if I can get them.
Okay. See if that works. Um, the other constituency group was someone that represents, um, real estate development. So kind of the person that might sit in that chair in the future. So either a frequent applicant, a developer, developer's representative.
Have we sent out any messages to them, anyone we know?
Any, like a individu- we could certainly do a personal invite. I think that's the other approach at this point.
I think at this point, it is merited.
Okay.
I mean, the form is on there, it's just a matter of changing the.
What about asking attorney Perlman if any of his clients would be interested, since he did mention that they were?
So send it to him and see if he or, or any of his, he, anyone he knows? Okay.
He goes of anyone, yeah, if he or anyone, yeah.
Tom, do you wanna send it to Andy or you want me to, or?
I want you to send it.
Okay.
From me.
All right.
If you have the, the blank form.
Okay, just add your name to the bottom and.
I think my name's already on it.
Make it work, okay. I'll send something to Andy.
I'll follow up with him.
Okay, I'll copy. I'll just send it electronically and copy you. All right. All right, so with that in mind, assuming we have bodies here other than yourselves, um, next week, or not next week, two weeks from now, um, what is our agenda and our objectives for the nineteenth? What do we want to accomplish at that meeting? Um, do you have some specific goals for what you'd like to have as outcomes? Um, we kind of addressed the who do we expect? Uh, do we need to spend any time on subcommittee organization? Just kind of go on a, go with the flow basis? Tom, you're still the chair and you stay the chair? Um, how do you wanna organize that component of, of the process? So.
I'll chime in with a thought.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's, they're subject to the same rules that we are, and that's a big if, Jan, you'd be the expert.
Yes.
Um, then, then they need to understand how they can and cannot conduct meetings.
Okay.
So I, I would put that on the agenda, um, assuming that there are limitations to how they can and cannot conduct meetings.
Okay. Okay.
Obviously, having goals, uh, communicating to them what our goals for the, uh, for the chapter are.
Yep.
Where it falls into the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And what their timelines are, what their time restrictions are to get this accomplished would be good ideas to communicate with them.
Okay.
I agree. I think that this should be mostly just, uh, us getting them up to speed on exactly what's going on and what they're expected to do. I think that should be the majority of what this next session is all about. Just defining what it is exactly they're doing.
Putting out a Q and A section is probably a good idea.
Okay.
Talking about how the, uh, the meetings will need to be conducted as part of the, um, planning board meeting.
Yep.
I would, I would suggest that somebody, um, put together this in a more formal way so we can make sure that we're touching upon all of the needed things that need to go into that conversation.
Such as? Beyond, you mean beyond an agenda, or?
I think he means by organization wise.
Okay.
What is expected, what has, what has to be done by law.
Okay. So like a basic.
Give them a little packet, you know?
Yeah, like a basic info.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Background packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, that's easy enough.
What their role and responsibility is.
Okay.
I don't know if they're coming in as subject matter experts, I hate that word, those words, or, or are they gonna go off and do a little bit of s- work on themsel- you know, themselves, you know, in the, each of their groups and then come back and report it?
So.
We should specify that we expect them to do research if it needs to be done.
Yeah. Right, uh, uh, you know, are we just gonna rely on them, or do they have to go off and do some research and come back with the results?
Yeah.
But do we wanna ask them why they're interested in it?
Yeah.
Sure, I think that's what the Q and A section would be looking for.
That may give us a better idea of which way to angle things.
I think to a certain degree, you can, I think it's fair to say upfront that committee members are accept, expected to participate and contribute in a meaningful way. This may include doing some work or research outside of meetings or assisting with outreach outside of meetings. Um, and then beyond that, those specific roles can be defined as the process evolves. Um, use example of ano- a project we're working on in another community. And in that instance, as the committee is going through and weighing their options, uh, in trying to assess the feasibility of various options, they've identified a series of questions that they have, um, as the committee. And so they took that list of questions and the committee members and staff divvied up those questions and each are now between the, their meetings, going out, doing the research, collecting the information, and then compiling it and bringing it back. So I think that's something that you can, um, address on an ongoing basis as needed. Um, and it doesn't necessarily need to be detailed at this point exactly. You know, everyone will do a research project. Um, it, it might relate to what are the questions that you, that you have, what are, you know, where are the, where is it going in terms of a direction? And then who on the committee is best suited to furthering that?
I do know that a couple of people have already expressed, expressed interest in sending in information.
That's excellent.
And I told them just to send it to the town to my attention.
Okay. Perfect. All right, and then we can have maybe Jo- Joan scan that and upload it.
Send it out to everybody.
Keep it all together, great. All right, so here's what I have for an agenda at the next, at that next meeting on the nineteenth. Um, uh, an overview of what the project is. With a briefing on ninety-one A, which is the, the public disclosure requirements um, and ties into meeting contact, conduct, and that these are going to be incorporated into the planning board meetings. You have bylaws, um, just kind of putting that out there. Um, then going into the project goals as they're articulated in the charter uh, and the process to achieve that, completing that chapter and how it fits into the overall master plan. Um, a dis- a discussion of committee, committee member roles. Uh, and asking members why they are interested, why they're here at the table, and then a question and answer session.
Sounds perfect.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
So we're prepping a, something with a little bit more meat than the charter for them to have as a handout, correct?
Yeah.
A little bit of a, kind of a, I hate calling them this, but a primer on what their job is and the context that they're working in.
Exactly.
And if there's no one here other than us.
If there's no one here other than us, so then we can get creative. So I think if there's no one here other than us, you guys have already done a little bit of pre- uh, preliminary research, so I think you can jump a step. You can jump ahead a meeting or two, essentially is what happens. If no one's here other than you guys, um, you've already done a little bit of research, uh, in terms of what you think as the planning board thinks should potentially be considered and thought um, about in, in a community design chapter. We've also talked to a, a certain degree about some of the different options out there for outreach and, and getting public input. Uh, I think we can, can return back to, all of those things are still sitting there on the Google site, we can return to those, sift through them and kind of come up with some internally, some next steps. Um, if it looks like it's not gonna be possible to get other people here, or maybe you only get one or two extra people here, great. Then you get one or two extra people here and it's you guys and one or two extra people, you know? Um, and at that point, you can maybe sit and you can brief, um, the one or two extra people that are here. You can give them a little bit more in-depth background, if it's only one or two people, on what you've looked at so far, what your thoughts have been, and get their thoughts on, on what they think, um, they might do or might incorporate and, yeah, that, it. To a certain degree, there's gonna be some playing it by ear. I didn't wanna go into the meeting though personally, completely playing it by ear. Um, so that was the other thing when I reached out to Joan and Tom and said, um, can we meet on the fifth? And, you know, it's my son's birthday, so the thought that it today, you might not have had a meeting, you know, the fact that I said, can we meet, was more me saying, you know, I'm not really comfortable going into that September fifteenth, the September nineteenth meeting where we're at right now, so I've, so, yeah.
And if nobody shows it, you know, my main concern was, you know, in good faith, we invited people.
Yeah.
And if it ends up we take on the role ourselves, then, okay.
And you can continue.
And at least tried.
Yeah, and you can continue to reach out to people and maybe, you know, if you don't get people to show up on the nineteenth, maybe, maybe it's okay. Well, for this particular piece of what we're looking at, we'd like to get someone who represents this viewpoint to give us their opinion. Or maybe we wanna get a few people who represent, you know, this community to give us their feedback. Um, it, you know, there's, there's some alternative ways that you can go about getting different voices incorporated into.
I was just thinking, we, we talked about having, or it looked like we talked about having a high school student on there.
Yes.
What if we had more than one, because number one, it might be useful for them to be able to work together.
Yeah.
Number two, we might get more work out of them because they're students.
Yeah. Especially if they do that for their sophomore, their sophomore project, cause they have to put in a certain number of hours and they have to show what they did.
We might be able to, just by virtue of that, be able to get more.
Yeah.
And it might be interesting for them because they live in the town.
And when I talked to the secretary.
She could get an art student.
Ooh.
She, we've mentioned that, and it's something that they would get together as a group.
Yeah.
At school.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we had a group of them, that would be probably useful.
You could get, if you get a civics one, a civics kid and an art kid.
Yep, perfect.
So when you follow up with the school.
Mention that.
Mention that, and say that, you know, if they've got more than one kid that's interested.
Yeah.
By no means do they need to weed them out. Send, you know, send whomever is interested.
Not that we're desperate or anything.
We have options.
Look at all these people. Sitting at this table.
And there are op, there are alternative strategies for still getting additional voices incorporated into the process.
Paying people?
No. It's not ethical. Good.
Cool.
You'd host a potluck.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody have anything else to bring up to this evening? Nope, okay, minutes for August second, August first.
I was absent for this one, so I do not, yeah.
Yeah, you're staying.
Tyler or Kim? Tyler and Kim.
Pretty small meeting. We didn't, yeah. Pretty small meeting, we didn't, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Yeah, uh, we just, we, we had the next meeting September nineteenth, but we kind of changed that, but that's what we did, so.
But we changed after the fact.
Right, so I, I, okay, I'll go.
You seconded?
Yep, you have a second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Abstained.
Passes four, zero, three.
Anything else?
Any other, Jen, do you have anything else?
I do not.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Passes seven, zero, zero. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, and our next meeting will be-